Alright, so I'll go ahead and call this meeting. For the work session nine one nine. So is that like a little stack or roll call? I don't know if we have anybody that's on. Meeting manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the community committee. Roll call for sessions at under twelve twenty twenty five at ninety eight in the Biden finance conference room. Honorable. Honorable filling the next gate did not enter roll call honorable. Vincent James.
Okay, James present.
Honorable we said they will call on Dr. Andy Nance. On Dr. Andy Nance, as you will call on Jermaine Simonson. Honorable Jermaine Simonson did not enter roll call on George Chou.
Oh, yeah.
On George Chou, the answer will call on. On worker C V took it on internal call, Mr. Chair, you have three members. Present three members absent. This work session does not constitute does not constitute a court.
Alright, so just for the record, I wish. You didn't think she was a completed level today. Uh, honorable Kersey need of it indicate that. Yesterday she just. Yeah, yesterday. That is what you're doing with us. So. With that. Uh, honorable we mentioned again, since she was on call. And so we're gonna make it for roll call. That's one of the things about the obligation. Yeah. Good morning, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have the policy. I think so. But she not care about she. We got the painting. Probably. And she. Announcement. We know there is a.
West Western Agency Council meeting tomorrow. When it arrows at nine o'clock.
Thank you. Announcement. Thank you, maybe no one going on the record, and we do have everyone going to sit there. I'm joined this year, so that moving on there. Um, we move on to two, which is your amazing guest, a visiting official. And your committee members for me here. And those that are here are perfect. Uh, thank you very much for being here. For a work session. And then those that are off the call. Good morning, appreciate the money you guys. That we say we're working here. There's no others, um, we'll go to the agenda and maybe you guys. We need to hear from census. What's in the events, so what is here um before us? Well, at this. Which agenda, when you you want us to follow. Or we will have it then, or the interview is not actually now.
Sure, um, the original agenda is for our meeting. But it also recognizes that. Uh, divided and outlined what they're gonna be presenting. And they have the they provide it and outline that um what they're gonna be presenting and and it's uh. And it's like one three uh so some there.
Hey, so. That's just invention.
Yes.
The agenda?
Correct.
Okay, alright, so. It's just the agenda for all this. Why not read it for three? When you say some presentation. So, um. With that, um, the generators are going to be adapted administration, Department of Education. Um, we have more association, Division of Human Resources and Department of Justice. I believe. That we'll be doing this morning. We're gonna most early here, so I'll go ahead and reverse. Time to give her a pre-presentation. That part man is an object, so it would be the school board qualification candidate filing a policy. Uh, reviewed by any paid and certification of candidates' challenges. The rules of school board. That paying cannot make meaning qualification in three secondary school board meetings by other parties with standing. Um, elections code amendments and then seven if. Uh, they have at least as question concerns or recommendations, but that's the pre-presentation that. Election office signs outlined for themselves to provide that information to the health education, human service. So that's just um. None. Your presentation. Uh, it's all the. Here. Uh, nor. Division of. In doors. But Nikita is here. Um, um, background that investigation also. Oh, Dealing with Anderson that is here, so thank you. So for the. For doors, Mr..
Yeah, yeah, I think. She. Uh, she, yeah. My dad's. But my dad should tell. But the election administration. Oh, um, uh, queer. Uh, school board. Call candidate.
Well, yeah, they say Tonya Bergen. Um, but it's. Because um, for financials, I'm just.
So they could outline the head. Could the school board every three years. What did they um? Bene, be bene, nice. Of course, how long that do we should eat now? Uh, eh, eh, fun that any. But secondly, the qualifications for school board. Uh, see. Did the two thousand five. School Board Act of two thousand five. It that it be not as late though. I did beach in each nation. It be made. Either um. Uh, background check. Do eh, eh, they produce in school. School, uh, to work with kids. Eh, eh, so. Of course, here, but oh, uh, election administration. I think so, eh, yeah, um. I can't understand that, yeah, from the other departments. Oh, I don't. Ne, ne, gee, eh, did eh. Is it over me? Eh, yeah, um. Uh. They bit by the seat here. But they their qualifications for school board, they candidate filings, they. Uh, every uh, May. Eight, late April and early May. Uh, and that's in for school board during a chapter election year. But are the eh, candidate certified as the election administration. By the fee that eh, eh, that you laid on candidate application. But oh, eh, yeah, be care of eh, yeah, the notice was on the face of the document. Candidate application. Uh, uh, bitch, eh, did I meet qualifications or? Uh, but no, the rise of eh, I don't eh, been nacha. Eh, been nacha eh, yeah, I don't um. Oh, you're certified. We proceed with um putting them on the ballot. According to um. Uh, election. Le, election. Oh, the office. Ah, the she in the deep. Background checks. Now, I'm here as the election administration. How I live for the certify. Yeah, that eh, eh, um. Um. Oh, you're qualified, you're eligible to run. Of course, I get the election code. Um, they could say that. Candidate filing, I did the background check. Uh, of the rest of favorable and favorable. Of what I eh, did eh. On that any can here, though, uh, election administration, though. Uh, la, did eh, the. The he, 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 he. Could eh, eh, the only but say that eh, yeah, but eh, um. For eh, vacancies, if you that eh, 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 ne, late after elections, it'll lessen that. Oh, um, we're in the beginning stages. Now, he's kind of. Um. The people, uh, that that's the good, the department. Uh, Department of the Education, the Neville Association. Division of Human Resources and Department of Justice Audit. Have representatives. Eh, uh. It was a very informational meeting because each of us, we have. Our duties and responsibilities, but we're not familiar with the other departments. So, uh. It it's a starting point. And one of the items that we that was discussed was changing. By a she, eh, changing the. Or adding the qualifications of getting the back of that. Ground check. Prior to or at the uh submitting it along the firing. Of course, we did, um. Each. Department Dodi, Department of Justice. And the Bozva, uh, gonna submit a proposed change based on what we discussed. So we did was receive one, but. That that's gonna that's gonna continue happening. Of course, so eh, qualifications be eh, that. Auto, um. Candidate filing process. I don't review of candidates. Challenges, they then they, um, candidate, uh. Any candidate, uh, certify. Uh, other candidates can challenge their qualifications. Could eh, Office of Hearings and Appeals to. We didn't, um, there's no hearing officer right now, so we weren't able to invite the hearing officer. Of course, that I mean, so. I don't disqualify. The candidate maybe because, um, removed that, you know. Not so. They ask Supreme Court, though. Um, but what is she, could eh, puts the position on hold. Of course, eh, 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 the. Before the. Uh. Or at the time of of candidate filing. Although not maintaining qualifications, eh, did the. Qualifications. Are they out of? We do have that, the election administration does have the authority to remove an individual if they no longer um. Meet the qualifications. The other one is if we must be consecutive meetings, eh, it comes from the school board. Uh, meeting to see for. They can be removed. Um, on, um. Without just cause call. Eh, without eh, did eh, for the, um. Uh, they made. But the main thing right now I wish we're we're focusing on is the. Qualifications for the candidates to 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 make that change. Uh, though, um, right now, currently, uh, you have, um, we have over. Fifty vacant positions. Although. Portionment. Uh, sorry, um, school board. Agencies. She does. Eh, she. Uh, in concert, school board. We hear eh, yeah, on page. Uh, advertising. But they, um. Uh, a target. If the meeting. But I can make. As the. He do part with, um, the part is. Could eh, eh, question.
Um, so. So with that, um. You have any? Comments? Both of.
Uh, good morning, Chairboard members or committee members, I apologize, staff members. China. The Neville School Board Association. Association eh, banana. Uh, as Ms. Hurley had mentioned, a couple days. Couple days ago, we had a met with Department of the Education, Navajo Election Administration. And also, um, Department of Justice regarding school board qualifications, school board. And the capacity that our school board members are at, we talked about the background check and several. Other topics regarding just school board members itself, um. We, as the Bozva, have been assisting, uh. Navajo Election Administration as far as recruitment. For the school board membership across Navajo Nation. I think the latest update that I did send over to you guys is the. The roster, the vacancy listing for, uh, Navajo Nation. Uh, with the assistance of the election administration and their staff, I, we were able to compile. Names throughout Navajo Nation. Our main focus is mainly the bureau operated schools, but we do work with. Other schools across the Navajo Nation, other bureau funded schools across the Navajo Nation, and so we compile names across Navajo Nation. Just to get an idea of. Or issues, to get an idea of which schools are able to move forward, uh, with, um. Holding meetings. Uh, one of the discussions we also had was regarding the recent legislation that was. Uh, amended. H E H S one. Regarding background checks and how Navajo Office of Background Investigations is to do background check, and we had a lengthy discussion. Regarding that, uh, which kind of puts a standstill on a lot of school board members out there. That policy that was put into place really. Bars school board members from acting in their elected positions. Until a background check is completed, I know there's a grievance or a, um. A grace period of ninety days within that policy. And right now, for the bureau operated schools, we have been sending over. Referrals to the Office of Background Investigation. Uh, we don't directly work with the grand school, so I'm not really sure how the grand schools have been working and. I believe Department of Education would should have been updating you all on it. But I know, um, through our process, we worked with, um, the O B I office to complete background checks. Further into discussion, a couple days ago, we we had talked about, um. Amending Title eleven, uh, regarding school board qualifications, I know. Several resolutions have come out from the Bozva requesting amendments to, uh. Title eleven regarding school board members, which is putting, uh. Switching the lifetime ban to a ten year ban and also excluding or prohibiting. Dodi and Bozva employees from being school board members. And so, um, I wasn't really sure how. The committee wanted to move forward with it, but as, um, Ms. Curly had mentioned, we did meet and we did discuss how what kind of amendments. We would like to see in Title eleven. We came to a conclusion, uh, we had a heated discussion and all in all, we came to an agreement. To where like, yes, let's just follow, uh, what the the policy says regarding background checks. And so, um. In the packet that you'll see, it it's just, it it's in draft, draft mode right now. Um, but Dodi, Debozva, Election Administration, well, Election Administration had let Dodi and Debozva be the one to. Take charge with this, uh, policy. So what we looked at, what we compared, if you notice on that first page, is that the first page is the current qualifications on top. For, um, the school board members. On the bottom of it, eh, on on the bottom half is Board of Education members. In a way, they have the same capacity as school board members, but more. Um, at a, at a. Navajo nationwide level. I think several of the discussions that we had is why. Why isn't, because the Board of Education also oversees schools, they have control over our Indian children. And one of the things that we had talked about is why isn't the Board of Education's qualifications as stringent as the Board of. Uh, local school board members. So, um. After our discussion regarding the background check, I think the implementation of putting. Uh, a requirement of background checks would be best to put it into Title eleven. So Board of Education is not really our our oversight, or we don't really have anything on that side, but you as education. Uh, the Education Committee may want to look at that too, but on the second page, you'll see the underline, it's supposed to be red, but the underlying portion is. The additions that or the edits that we would like to make. So this includes the language coming from the Bureau of Indian Education. Uh, the Bureau of Indian Education, they follow twenty five C F R, part sixty three. Point one two regarding background checks, so all your bureau funded schools. All your staff members in the bureau funded schools have to follow that policy. School board members and administrators must ensure that all staff members, volunteers, anyone that's going into the school grounds that has. Regular contact with children would have to have a background check. Whether it be parent committee, whether it be volunteers to basketball games, you would have to get background checks. So we kind of just took some language on there. We kind of kept the language the same, of course, uh, this part sixty three is really stringent. O B I will, uh. Will most likely provide comments on it on how stringent part sixty three is or just their. Child, um, childcare position, so basically it's childcare positions, and so. Um, and then the second one, that is. Uh, a requirement of to get a background check while serving in the school board capacity. So for reference, this, the. Third, fourth page is just twenty five C F R, part sixty three point one two. So one of the things that we had discussed, of course, was just the alcoholism part, putting a lifetime ban, um. Through adjudication certifications, that would kind of limit the lifetime ban. I did talk about it with our board members across Navajo, um, within the executive board and. We would kind of like to leave a ten year, maybe a five, ten year ban on just alcoholism. So the the new amendment does not have that alcohol alcoholism ban. The adjudicator would be the one to would be the one to, um. Determine if that board member is favorable and unfavorable. And I think we took into, uh, Navajo, uh, customary laws and just rehabilitation, I think we took that into. Consideration, I think that's one of the main things that we also talked about, um. Board members who have gotten the D U I back in the nineties, but went through the whole process of counseling, uh. The rehabilitation part, that's, I think that's one of the things that we did discuss. And so surprisingly, uh, Dodi, uh, and. O B I, Debozva was in favor of just leaving it to, uh, the background check individuals. To determine whether it's unfavorable, favorable. So the amended one, the recommended one kind of takes out, but it still leaves it in there and it doesn't make the alcoholism. Uh, a serious issue, just more if that person gets, uh, gets goes through the process of. I guess, uh, coming back to life, I guess. And so the last, uh, page in your, in the packet that I did provide is the resolution. For from the Bozva, uh, basically a resolution that talks about the ten year ban. And and then also, uh, employees of the Bozva and Dodi to not be a part of school board members because. Of course, it's a conflict, I think, um. Candace French had mentioned that that language was already in the current, uh, the current. Title eleven qualifications, but it's not directly, it's 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 open, I should say. But that is, um. That would, uh, conclude my my report, my portion of the report, so I don't know if there's questions.
Alright, so that, let me go to, um, Department of Justice. We only go to. Background investigation.
Why don't you do that?
Okay, there's, uh, the media. You have heard. I don't think any of it is here from border.
Um. Excuse me, I just wanted to let you know that um Claudia, Superintendent Edgewater, she's at a board meeting at St. Louis at the Net College. And then Derek, he should be here shortly. He just happened to be in an interview thinking that the meeting started at ten. So I told him as soon as it's done, get back over here. So that's the reason why they're not here.
Oh, you're good. Okay, alright, I'm gonna go back to.
Yeah, I say. Yeah, I say again, I'm. If you had a group with. Yeah, I'm Lady Chair Dolan, who's on behalf of Education Council Service Committee, Sherry uh Nikita Kurtis. I'm the Program Manager for the Office of Background Investigations. And uh K I one U S R, that means I'm a Bush's team, but I'm writing a shame, I'm a bill, like the community. Although I have a game, uh although staff that are here and also want um all the others seeing in the hall. Then I also brought on this guy with me, who's surviving us, he's our H R um adjudicator. So I provided a report, which I emailed to all of you uh yesterday. So basically, it's just a progress report that I'd like to share. And this one is going to be regarding uh background checks. Some time back, we did receive uh the Hess um registrations. It has eleven dash twenty two and has dash zero two twenty five. And this is regarding uh background checks. Again, so our office will be coordinated with the net of that's the more association, the secret of the city, the executive director. Um and initiate the background check process in accordance of established O B I procedures, and these are also including different laws. We discussed, I mean, it's the five eleven, Navajo Nation Code. So the local school board checklist and required forms were prepared and distributed to the Bozba. And local school boards, both in person and via email. Upon request, I mean, we did offer our O B I dot dot in that Navajo nation dot dot email. Which is uh secured, so and we use that for um. For so school members and employees can submit their documents to us and that goes directly to our office. Um as part of working the school boards, we could also reach out to the Navajo Police Department, the Information Management Section, who. Uh we were probably involved in the background check process for local school boards and and sort of test revolutions that. So the timeline for the criminal traffic issue reports that we requested for over eighteen percent of present. And those happen kind of. For their requests. And then O B I also conducted outreach activities for to assist the local school boards in completing their background checks requirements and this includes. Educating them on our process, speaking. And also on providing forms, and if they have any additional questions, we're there to listen to them on their concerns and. Uh any questions they had. So there were a few um. Dates that we had met with these school boards, and this is at the request of the Debozba's head of director, they had a strange conference back in April. In Galop, then there was another school board training in March, uh that was at St. Mito. And then also, we still also serve them on a moment today and at our office, which is at twenty seven forty Martin Boulevard. So progress so far from the time we started doing their background checks, I think we started back in April. To present, we processed forty three uh background checks. So thirty five are the Bureau operated schools and eight are the travel control schools. So totaling is forty three. We provided a graph. Just to let you know, just to give you an idea of how this looks, um and those are the only ones that can draw. Uh the timeline, uh again, pursuant to the Hess, you can dash twenty one. Or test uh dash eleven dash twenty two and has. Dash zero two dash twenty five. The local school school boards were granted ninety days from the date of their oath of office to complete the required check, required background checks. And then an additional ninety days was extended to them, and then that we got expired back in June. So those are the current numbers we have. We do still have um school board members that are coming in this morning, and I was even the officer was one coming from Redo. Um challenges is just gathering documents from school board members along, since it's something new to them, they were quite. Unfamiliar, so it was very overwhelming for them, and this is for the certification documents, and those are oath of office, stating of oath. Candidity of election and candidacy application. So those are the required documents that we were requesting for, and this is for the school board investigation purposes. Uh we did try to assist them by. Are creating our own internal process where I allowed the investigators to assist in the intake process of the school boards to have them go ahead and request for these documents on their behalf. Mister City did also provide um a school board list and. Also records of these as well, but um Elections Administration, they don't really have a lot of this information, or they didn't have records available at the time. But to date, we're still working with them and waiting on some documents. So that was a major challenge there. And so the conclusion is. Based on the regulations by H S, we were able to provide new services. And as long as the local system works, we find with our process, we are visible. Um although the Navajo Nation employees are our main, our primary audience. Um the background check services was extended to local school members and. Um we are including them in our briefing. And so I just have a comment regarding the the and Mr. City's proposed. Um. Amendments to the laws uh. For our office, we are using the current process, which is a title. Eleven Navajo Nation Code for the school board members and. And including the the current laws, Navajo Nation law, state and federal, and O B I will continue to abide by the current laws until these amendments are made. Just to remain compliant and just put safety while believing of our children and our Navajo employees. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Um for that, so let me go to you, Jim.
Good morning. Chair James, my name is Brenda Anderson. I'm the Principal Tribal Court Advocate over at the uh Navajo Department of Justice. And I work along with twelve clients, and one of them is with the O D A. And uh which is Officer, you know, compliance or accountability and um compliance. And so um we were at this meeting yesterday and I was thankful that we were all there to meet. One of the persons that is not here is Mr. Ron Haven, and so with that um. I wanted him to be here so that we could um coincide with all what we had talked about and discussed um. Uh Department of Justice um has reviewed the election code and. Uh we looked at the mandatory uh background checks, and as you know, this earlier part of this year, there was myself, um. The former uh O D A program manager, Anderson Yazi Junior, um Miss Nikita Kurt from O B I. Um and then we had um. Let's see, who else was it? Oh, Jordan was in it from Debozba for one meeting, and there was um. Dodi. Miss Miss Jamie Lowry. And then now we have Mr. Derek Franklin, and there has always been um Claudia Edgewater that is always notified. So with that, you know, um. We we had discussed the mandatory criminal background checks. So these uh criminal background checks, we we got it all taken care of and we had made a lot of amendment changes according to what we had. And so with that, you know, I know that you all have copies uh of that. In our discussion yesterday, when we were over at the election office there, um Miss Veronica Curly, along with Ron Haven. Had some genuine concerns regarding the qualifications for candidates for school board. And with that, you know, we had talked about um the issues that were already raised by Mr. City as well as um Miss Curly. And so. Yesterday, we received a just a draft from that from uh Mr. City from Debozba. And we have yet to um get together uh one one draft uh. From the O D A office, which is from Dodi. And then from my point of view, from Department of Justice. And then we get those together, send it off to Ron Haven. Ron will be the one to be reviewing it and looking at it so that we can go into another discussion regarding this. And it and it's for the reason of these mandatory background checks. You know, as you know, that a mandatory background checks are really important simply because. One of the factors that was brought up was that Navajo Nation, especially for education. They have federal fundy monies that come in, and so in each one of these, uh they it dictates that they need a uh suitable. Background check, and so of course, you know, money is involved. Money is hard to come by for some of the school board members, so we had decided that um. Uh we needed to curtail and make it simplified. For the for those that are trying to be elected as school board members. And so with that, uh we had made recommendations, but I would really would like for the. An education O D A office to be here. I hope that Mr. Franklin would would come. And so that I, because I don't work with um O D A, I I only can advise them and give them legal advice and recommendations. So with that, I know that um there's going to be some draft formulation. Or with uh myself, as I said, with O D A, and then giving it to Mr. um Haven. Now, one of the things that did come up was the word unfavorable. And that's where we came in, because as as legal counsels, there's like about six of us that were in there. There was Miss French, there was Mr. City. Uh my colleague behind me, Missa City, and then Mr. Haven and myself, as five of us there. We all had problems, because when we go into um. Before the Court of Law, which is a Navajo Nation judicial court. Or the Administrative Courts, which is the Office of Hearings and Appeals, we will have. To ensure what the word unfavorable really meant. What it means to a person. So we have to reflect all the documents and all the evidence that is presented to us if we're going to have a decision that's going to be granted by. Office of Hearings and Appeals, the Supreme Court, or the District Court of the Navajo Nation Courts. So with that, you know, we have conflicts there. So uh Mr. City had pointed out that they look at the uh character suitability under C F R six sixty three point twelve. And it does have all the information regarding the minimum standards of character performed, the duties of particular position without um risk. And that has to do with uh Native American children. That's fine, but you have to remember that. When you go through a background check, these background checks is on their own person. It can't, we don't know what what their lives have, um but they did in the past, it's on them. So we have made the recommendation that before they even come. Or and they want to sign up and say, I want to be an elected uh school board member, then. Maybe it should be at the point where right off the bat, before they even sign anything with the Navajo Election Administration. They need to really consider and say, am I really going to be qualified? Will I really pass all these uh merits here? Uh that that what the document is saying from the Election Administration Office. Before they even make their payment of two hundred dollars to the election office, because that's a lot of money. And uh if they say that they have a good background check, then by all means. Buy their their um. Uh application, give them the money and move forward. And so that's the problem that we're having is is that we need to streamline it and uh get it simplified. Before they even are going to be elected, because now we're having problems, because we have the special elections. And then we have all these different types of timing issues, and that's that's the part that uh we're getting hung up on. So when we go into into court there, I want to go back, it's because. We have these issues that need to be clarified and simplified, and then the 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 uh election code. As well as uh making it simplified for O D A, so that everybody is on the same level. And uh I know that Mr. City's program, they they have a training strictly for school board members. And school board members need to uh really ensure that, you know, if they're if they're going to be um elected school board members. That they have to follow this and and it's it's really stringent. So um. Superintendent Edgewater had gave a prime example about how many times she had to go and get her um background check. And I believe that every time when she had to uh get one, she had to pay. So it when I counted it, it sounded like it was five or six times. So these these things come up and it costs money. And so with that, uh we wanted to, well, it was recommended by um Superintendent Edgewater and her department. That it should come right from the beginning, that they get their background checks prior. To them signing the information or the application with Navajo Election Administration Office there, and then once that's done. Then they can turn that in or however they're going to do that, but we still had, we were still in the discussion changes, as I said. We also discussed the multiple school board issues that were coming out. We also discussed the adjudication part. The adjudication part is is really a must. Uh of course, Mr. City said that he was trained to be an adjudicator. Of course, you know, you're going to have some conflicts there, but you know, you have to be very careful on that. Um it was also recommended that uh maybe we could use um. Indian Education's on Navajo Hip Start uh program, they have a uh they have to complete a background check. And they they, I just did this contract last night, and they go through um the uh. It's it in the state of Florida, they have a complete background check of everything. So maybe that was something that they consider, it was considered, but. You know, after after thinking thinking about it, you know, of course, there's going to be some notifications of. You know, how to, what to, and then of course, is the problem with money. And uh all the recommendations were made, and so that's where we're starting, so that's the reason why I need to revisit that. Um we also talked about the national sexual offender and how that will tie in, and so. All these discussions were all brought up, and so we all need to ensure that we we at least simplify it so that everybody is on the same page. And at a prime example was when we had our meeting yesterday, we had some school board members that were there and uh. I know that Miss Curly didn't want to turn them away, but she had told them that we have attorney uh client privilege information that's going to be shared. And so they had to leave, and I know they wanted to be there, probably give some maybe recommendations or suggestions. But uh honestly, we just couldn't, we couldn't allow that, otherwise we'd be there all day. So with that, you know, um we we had a really good discussion, so it was recommended. And uh I I want to recommend to um. Miss Curly here that we're going to go ahead and at least do drafts. I'm 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 very uh glad that Mr. City uh submitted his draft and his version, and he he had the opportunity to speak to his uh. His uh board members or whoever he he visited and and submitted these this document in. And this is a very good uh start, but he also needs to hear from um O D A. Within uh Indian Education, and so we need to do our portion and then come together and then submit that to Mr. Haven. And Mr. Haven can look at that. So I think um probably another couple of work sessions, uh you know, I just don't want to delay this, it's just that it's needed right away. Uh one of the biggest areas is the uh elections. Of course, um Miss Curly had been on the board. Regarding the general election and the primary election and special elections. So with all of that, you know, that's just really a a lot of. Information that we have to look at and to consider, and of course, it costs money every time we have an election. And so um we're looking at people that want to help, that want to be on school boards. That want to have a really good quality of life and. That want to have a really good quality of life and look at the best interests of the children. And so that's why we're, we're having this discussion, but we, I, I would like to ensure. That everything is simplified, that's the way, um, the way of thinking. For every one of us, especially, you know, we wanna look at that, and the future is. Our children, I, as you know, that most of us always look at the future for our children, and we, we use that for. The campaigns or if we're ready for elections, so we need to simplify it and move forward and, and get this done. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, um, um, for that again, so, with that, we have a motion. Question? Question, committee members, really quickly.
Um, I, I just wanted to know. Your, your current school board and. That are officially school members at the moment, and how many of. Position are vacant?
Exactly.
And so, um, and then, the reason why I'm asking for these two is out of the current school board members. Um, how many of them have issues with felony background? Um, or. Um, trying to be in compliance with, with the law. So out of the current school board members. Um, and then, out of that, if we do have a number of individuals that are trying to get through the process, but what is that number? That will probably help us, for me, it would help me. Uh, because I'm, I'm trying to figure out. How we are hitting on this initiative? Are we trying to accommodate those individuals that have a felony background? To get them into the vacant position? But I, I just see this whole process that. That's the goal, is to accommodate these school board members to get back into the school board position. Um, with making these changes in, in the law. But re- regardless, I think, at the end of the day, you know, it, it's, there should be no felony, if, if we're going to. Put them before or have them speak for our kids. And, and so that's, that's my main question, and, and so, how many of these families are we trying to accommodate? Um, and to make the change, to, to, to change the law for them, so they can follow by it. And so, it, it quite be, um, enough, uh, then another thing is that. Um, the reenforcement, it's gonna be very important to, to know this information for the reenforcement. Um, at the same time, when I think what comes into factor two is the enrollment of students. How many students are gonna be enrolled at these schools? And so again, that all corresponds to the reenforcement, and then, uh how many school boards do we need? Um, and, and in certain areas, but. It, it's something that's very interesting, but I just don't like the fact that we're trying to accommodate. And assist some of these school board members that have background felony, you know. To, to get into those positions, they might have been in those positions for years, but you know, at this point, some of them have to draw the line and say, hey. You know, because we, we can't do this, we can't hurt our kids anymore. That's the way I see it, but I, I could be wrong. But through this work session, hopefully, I'll get more information, but right now. Uh, I'm settled to that point that we're just trying to accommodate. For those school board members that have a felony issue that are going through the process, trying to resolve it. Then, oh, my last one is, um. Did you guys talk about how many years it should go back, or I mean, did it go back to the April eighteen? Or five years, like ten years? But, I, I don't know if that was, if there was a discussion uh among you guys on that. Um, I, I did see it, now we're coming from the both of these, um, in, in their. In their document, I guess, in, in, when we got in that, I just wanted to, to know that, as well, was there any discussion among you guys regarding. How far is it, uh, background check should go back? I mean, so, it, it, that's gonna be a very interesting um conversation, but again, at the end of the day, I think what we're, what I see. Me as individuals that we're just trying to accommodate those individuals that have a felony charge to get into these school board position. Yeah, life might have changed, but at the end of the day, if this is the requirement for officer board. For all educators, administrator, then they should, they at that point, but that's just me. This, my, my thought is what we're trying to do is accommodate those individuals. To get into those school board position, that's the way I see it. Other than that, committee member, uh, I will talk to that, and then we'll go to honor.
Thank you, Chair, and uh, you're finally for us, you're Jay, uh Obi, I, so we're doing this and all that show us. So I have a few questions to pose. And so, in this document here, recommended qualifications for school kid with. That was your, too much, I always know my question is, did you all talk about? Like, the requirements as far as their credentials, like educational background, et cetera? Uh, I mean, it's bad enough, we're trying to, we build all these different positions, but I think I'm just curious if that was part of the discussion? And then, um. My other questions are regarding. Um, the information that was presented by election office. The information that you presented, I believe you guys kind of just uh talking mood. But I don't know if you, what you presented is in writing, and if it is, if you can share that with the committee. Uh, because you did go through one through seven, but. It'd be good if we just like had, had you, you write for us in the same way that, um. Obi, I did their nice booklet for us. The both of us also vibing that, um. And so, then we did receive energy from the heart of the Navy Education. And that's one of my other questions too, is effectively, the Department of Education. Who you titled in are our educational agents, organizations. I'm pretty sure both is like coming to the last place, so there, uh, please, here, one, again, to the case. Two, there's no proposed representations or anything, so we, there's still no representation from the Board of Education. And it's just concerning, because we look at you, who you titled in to be our educational agents, and it seems like. There's always some regrets, you know, as in. Here, whether that's physically or whether that's just providing some rare conditions, and to me, as, as a committee member, that's still just. Um, discipline, and so, that's my question to election office, but also. Um, my additional questions is, how much does it cost them to do these ongoing continuous elections? Um, I am not a fan of these millions of elections that are taking place. And the reason I'm asking is because I have the interest to drop the legislation to cease all elections. If the cost is high. Except twelve for twelve schools, which I appreciate that those have seen us, the vacancies. Currently, there are twelve schools that are not available, you know, because of vacancies. And I always go back to this as a committee, I thought we were doing a lot of our agents a favor by giving. Some level of tolerance to their old schoolers, and then for. Ten, twenty years of their, of these schools that have issues with their schoolers, and I'm. A fan of the next HES committee that does the reenforcement. That this is part of the recommendation to regionalize, maybe not as. How it looked prior, because that was such an interesting one too, but I, I think that's just kind of our review. Um, so for example, I'm gonna use what was generated by, you know, all taught, sold by association that was sent to us. So, for example, I'm gonna use rough out community school. They're able to meet more, but they have a vacancy, but should should listen. So why should we continue to reach out to children to, to get an individual, if you're already needing more? And that's why I'm asking is how much does it cost the election office to do these elections on a consistent basis? And I'm gonna say the same for regular chapter. We still have a vacancy for Crystal Boarding School. And almost every month, when I'm doing my chapter reports, we're like, we need another representative. And ultimately, I don't include it into my reports anymore, which will, if you have corn, you're able to meet what we can do. But it's like, okay, how much is it costing then the election office, so if you share that information? The costing wise, I, I, I'm not looking for like your interpretation of whether you agree with it or not, um, just the costing is, is what I want. And then, I don't know, as all of our agents here, the other thing I have interest in, and this is something I brought up before, HES. Um, C Y or N Y season eleven, twenty five, it was passed, one, they did not support that um legislation. But, I, at the time we were talking about it. I told, or I posed the question. Why don't we do it in a way where if you're going to apply to these positions, you do it before you actually apply? Rather than ninety days after, rather than whatever, before you take your oath, et cetera? Because if I have an interest in these school board members, these are my requirements, then that's my responsibility to make sure I keep that. Rather than getting folks through the application, and then you're starting to, to wait. And then now with this waiver, and the reason I agree with it is because you still had unknown. School board members of what their background shared. And again, you were virtually nowhere in your students, but still, it just, it just didn't make logical sense to me. So, my question now, then, with that kind of background in mind, is what are your thoughts on, are having one or more? Is this state trial or federal complete at the time of the application? And then have it fully completed before the primary? And I know at that time, I'm gonna hear excuses, like I'm trying and nobody's returning here. The excuses go above and beyond. And I heard that when our chapter officials were met with that. Law as well, because they didn't turn to their extent, that's your responsibility, you want position, then you submit your experience report. We don't hit it, but then some of us got unfavorable comments and dispositions and such. It is not even our responsibility, on this. That, that was on you, and whether it was legislation to waive it, or to send it out of it. But then you have those types of incidents that have come up too, so. That's my other question too, just if, if everyone wants to just briefly share what that would look like. And then, um, Department of Education, like you have literally here, uh, just the tardiness and everything. Um, not only just being present in the meeting, I know there was a, um, you thought it was at ten o'clock, but it's actually at nine o'clock. But, um, just like on some of the recommendations, and this is why I think it's important to bring the Board of Education too, is because. We've always hear from programs directly, we never hear from the Board to advocate on behalf of their, the, 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 the. And, sure, I'm probably an unfavorable comment, but that's like our reality, we can look at our minutes, we can look at everything else. You're not present when we need you to advocate for your entire permission, in order to see that, hearing the question. We have Jay Leno for us, we have O D S I over for us, we have Abin over for us. Nowhere for the Board of Education, say we need these funds for our certain divisions, and so. Um, again, I posed these questions, it, it's annoying in a lot of ways, because. I, I like election time, and I think it's a good time to be educated, to see new faces, see new ideas. But I think just ongoing. Continuous elections are really creating voter apathy. And we have another important election next year. And I was just saying, we might have a lot of, you know, no one's gonna be interested, I don't know what the direction of anything of this is going, but. That, to me, that's, that's my concern, and that's why I, I always have to ask some of these questions, because. By law, we can make some of these changes, um, and I'm happy to, to do that, you know, offer some of these recommendations. But of course, has some clarification, and I know it's noted here that we also needed to fulfill that, I don't know how we, what we made about. Thank you, Chair.
Yeah, thank you, with that, honorable.
Thank you, um, Chair.
And just to say, I'm sorry, all the things that did the errors. Because of the law, I've treated, yeah, as a great face for a long time. So I'm glad that you guys are coming together with the plan. So that's what we need to do, all of the election, uh, background, that will be. Uh, so this, this is the reason why we, um, have this work session. Uh, the video of the whole year, so we need to create this mess, and somehow. By your assistance, can you even, you know, you have that intervention. I'm glad we can get that as soon, we supposed to in, in first place. But it's something that, when I came in, oh, you could see a lot of the Navajo grants, we would. Oh, it not fair, so I'm glad this can be, all we can give. Oh, we need each other, I think you should notice this city. Have another work session among yourself. One, I don't believe that's a mistake. To that, with the situation, the problems from the, I believe in it. See if we can fix it as a team. And give us a solid plan. Oh, if I, I should. You know, I'm here, I'm not clear, be prepared now, check out, see, become a man's souls. With a solid plan, you know, a rock drill, like in Nebraska, we should. If you, if you have a soul, we can forget it. Or man's representation, here that has he can be involved. Or actually, yeah, John, on the subject. So we need to get ready for the next election. What do we need to do? We need another election, we're not really, we so far, that will. Uh, I'm opposed, but we're at your feet now. Oh, we were so wrong, for, for, for. Cause you know, I was, and such, it is just how we interpret, you know, that. Though show me like anything. Although elections, when we are, if you don't want to. The reason why I'm saying this, there's a lot of still, uh, mismanagement now. They're giving themselves a hard time, it's more than. This, to my school, my area. And it was actually a problem, I'm seeing. Call, I'm proud of that. How do we get the school board to really, you know. All that, so, you can't, you can't, that's. Now, I, I don't need background, or, can't we see that? I don't need that, a policy, we, from the school board. Yeah, background, I don't know yet, so, I check on myself, you know. Which is why we rely on local control, you know, that. We have a sense, we challenge each other. I will hand the schedule, please, I will tell you, and so. I think you, the record, you know, you have that expertise. Come together and fix it. It, it, you is. It so hey, since when I was still. Hesi can be put that one. I'm just in a key. We don't ask any deal by. How many times we come together? Remember when in the oxygen? Or none of that, all important people in here. Board of Education, had a chance, had a chance. Just been out. Though we know. Where is third man? All news, all right, but in writing. It hit off the show. I go A, he was soon to be checked, she was soon. Chun here, yeah, it's a bad word, yeah, oh, it's a bad word, it's come on, you know. I will learn knowledge in laws. Procedures. Even now. She will come to the space. Do you know, I'm not the number two. Then come out with this tour, one or two plans. How we like, they all we do is point for your selection, they constantly. Though it will like that. Was from China, you know? So I think it's time to get on the wall and fix this problem some ways enough. So we can set. Lifetime, I know. I'm yellow, that's strong, you saw that, it's a school board. In a drink. Uh, you know. They saw me in that. When they become a school board, they will choose the whole system. Yeah, none of that. I'm the. I go to their conference, the both but. I'll never be seen. I show this school board. To stay with your side, I see responsibility. We don't need to go along with the principle making. Changes there now and then. I have credit and leave it in the house of life, it's on the down there. My school shouldn't be there. I would then see a school board in a ministry. Why is the Hesi committee committing to our school? I'm improved three times. Now, what they should do, I have a doggy over a Sunday. I'm sorry, you know? Miss to the joke after the mission, see. What the hell are you guys doing? Part of responsibility of everybody, you know? I love the requisite board of education out now. At this point, I'm then. But why is he hiding? We have a word session Monday and I'm then. That's why it was a bit of it, I'm unhappy, we can get these people in here. And resolve these issues. She got down, hasn't she? Let's take care of it. Oh, solid plan. I see the body in our turn. It's the nothing. Six six six, now I had a big job. So. I don't give funds for this, minister in school board. So I'm glad we're coming together and fix this problem. Yeah, I think all this. On yes, you know, I hope I can do it. I'm ready for this install. In my area, three school board needs to. Well, part of community school. I have one from. The road and personally, I need two more from Little Water and Sminkly. Two batch, maybe from that's two days school. School board has a shop. The show of the box, I know. Today, I just wanted to say that to you. I hope you understand what I'm saying. Like I say, you have the expertise, they didn't get the structure. I'm jungle, so we don't have until this problem is good. Today, I'm alone and have Hesi can be. I know, but I remember me taking up one or actually twelve, sure. One twelve in your own eastern. We like not talk. So it is okay. So, once so Chair, thank you.
Uh, Karen, thank you. Um, thank you. So I guess my my other question will be on this. How many days do you guys have to maybe be on this? Maybe come up with a the draft proposal? Um, because you you know, even if it's this support. Um, I mean, it uh DOJ election background check, the Bozbo. I really don't know about those. Because uh at this point, we don't even know who the contact person is, what it be. So I I know Mr. Franklin's here. But once he walks out the store, he might change to another person again. And that's the hard part of the week. There's there's really nobody that is saying or stepping up and saying that I'll be the contact person. And and that will always be here with you guys. So I don't know, even if you four get together. He might not be there and then super, then he might be here or but it might be another shot. So they're not giving the full information. Um, as a consensus information, that's the problem with D O E. And so even if it's this support issue, that you guys can get together and put the proposal. And then provide it to us, how many days do you guys need? I mean, I would even ask Mr. Franklin, but again, he might even really charge that D O E to give us that date. Um, uh again, that's another problem. Um, so we'll we'll quite get reaching out to staff on that, I don't know how. How we can um figure that out, you know, not the same issue with um bill of it on. But if you guys can get something um together, hopefully Mr. Franklin will be part of it. Um, I I know that they've been going up and down and on certain issues and problems there. So though obviously, I am just fun, definitely, that's the problem. And so if you can get a draft, I know we can get something at least that starts us to move something forward. Yeah, I don't think. They they will be quite different delegates, different outside Hesi members, project. Not that the office is not providing, you need to make amendments here, none of it, no, um. Advocate, not that I can go there, when they have all the opportunity to be part of it. And then to to sit there and find figure out, okay, I'm the main contact person. We have that opportunity, but then all that debates gonna happen on the floor again. A that A I. A huge of. No, not that we what for the board of head school staff on D O E. A one of nuclear call. Um, so it it's it's very interesting, but um again, if you guys can get something, hopefully Mr. Franklin will stay with you guys. Um, and and just stop a lot of the reasons of not participating. Uh, I think that will make a lot of changes on behalf of our children out there. Of all, but that call, um, and and hopefully by then we have some serious individuals from board of head that will sit in as well. A the uh, not a technical, I'm I'm the non mission, not that they they. A quite amount of talk for them, they all have uh worked. Well, they 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 don't make it a priority, well, but how about not, it's just that they know. Um, but. I think if we have most of you guys, majority of you guys coming together and discussing it, I think it's it can happen. And I know it will happen. Um, it's just we just need to keep. Keep um bugging D O E that you need to find somebody that needs to participate at all time with no excuses, with no reasons. To put on technical, um, so issue, yeah, issue with all the change capability. But what I really want to know too is how far it goes back. But I'll leave that up to you guys and and make those recommendations to us as a testing committee. Once you guys put it all together, then we will all review and talk about it again. Um, so let's. Maybe. Um, and and then before we convene again and discuss the recommendations that we've all worked together. As into one document, or I I think it's already started here in control. Um, by the Bozbo, Mr. Ed City. So he can probably be friendly and can say, okay, I already have it this and so. So how can we move forward and this time is where I need to make changes and so forth. Um, but this one's still.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So um I have not typed out, I mean, it's already typed out, look at this. Thank you. So I get out, I keep, yeah, it's already draft, you know, I think well, the work is is already done. I thought we had assist to come back and make changes or go work by word, see where you guys make some changes. Um, that's the part that I really like what Honorable Paul said, that you guys are coming together and we have proof that, you know. Mr. Ed City has this electronic copy now that you guys can come back and sit down, start working with this, work with their thoughts. And have that fun of finding draft that he need. Um, so it is with F, I hope Mr. Franklin will stay stay with you guys and. So stay part of the group to all the way, um, we will we get this issue resolved. So that's. My ask to you guys. Uh, but other than that, I think that's it and I'll be in the forum back for response. I don't think we'll go further or hold on, hold on.
Okay.
Next for now.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the House, they deserve us. I I was aware that I didn't even want to say that same thing. It seems like the um election, oh, this one is going to be the eyes that. Think. And um. What um, what it does take out is the um. The section of that twines and welfare of children, uh, how likes and child. And also aggravated with uh this assault and aggravated batteries, other times like. But I think that 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 portion change is also like me and. That this is really exciting, seventeen. The uh criminal code, um, regarding the alcohol, what um we need to see. The and. The um. So I, I don't know how to change and then um the C F R. Um, I love that, I mean, uh, you you can extract any line from the C F R into the into probably. Um, title, uh, but the C F R for sixty three twelve. Uh, it's about the blood bar minimum standards of. But all of this um section that it refers to in C F R is in. And it doesn't have any of this language about meaning candidates have uh must not have any liability or enter free of no contender. Or guilty to enter the following, it doesn't have that those kinds listed in at least the C F R that I can have. And referencing. Um, and then the um, um, J, it also references C F R. Sixty three, but instead of part B, I think it's part C.
C.
It's three, okay, this one's the um, I think that this one's it's um, the uh.
What?
Why is it sweet? Yes, okay, mine says C, so that's why I'm really had it. And uh. I think we probably will have it, you know, online or. But um, but that's what I'm um looking at.
Thank you, um, thank you for that information. Um. Again, I guess that's where we meet your guys is expertise. In like, she's been, Mr. Knowles been here for quite some time now, so. If she's recommending that, you know, we start off with title eleven, election code verse, and then so we shift down. To the rest of the other titles, the other codes and then let us know. That that's that's very helpful to to know. Um, and and I don't know. I don't, I don't even recall if we have any consultant money. Um, that can maybe assist by trying to pull all this together as as a final document. Um, but we could always look into that as well, but that's until everything has been finalized among you guys. Um, then we can try and figure something out regarding the funding for that as well. Um, that will be very helpful too. Um, so just let us know uh where where you guys stand as a group, as one. Um, to to resolve this now, but again, I I look up to the expertise, the knowledge, individuals like you guys. Have the experience for many years, so. Uh, our advisor is the name on title eleven is the recommendation you just started off with. Then let us know as well as maybe you can do it on a word chart or a quick word chart to break down. Our process or something, uh, help all of us know what the process is going to be. But Ed, thank you, George, I hope you go first.
I do.
Okay, same.
Chair James and committee, I just wanted to let you know that I wanted to go back to your question. Regarding um, you you asked, how many are we dealing with? Well, um, Mr. Haven and I, along with Naffy, so and then Program Manager, Anderson Yazi Junior, we had a hearing. And with O J, we took care of that one, so we haven't received an order just yet. So we were using the mandatory criminal um code, I mean, the the policy then, we use that. And that was very helpful. So right now we have two before Nataho Office of Hearings and Appeals. So the hearings haven't been scheduled, so I just wanted to clarify that. But let me tell you that the criminal background um policy that we did that we did have is very helpful. Um. But we still need to incorporate that with what you had just got through saying. So all the answers that you you need to get are gonna be from Veronica and Mr. Franklin. So I I wanna give it over to Mr. Franklin because he just came in and then she can finish it off. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think um the record, my name is Derek Franklin, uh, it's part of the litigation, I believe, national mission. Um, I've been, was assigned uh by Claudia to attend the workshop that took place a couple of days ago. We did have productive meeting. Uh, we discussed in length many situations that that are happening or that that will change title eleven. Um, in terms of um incorporating background checks into the requirements for school boards. Um, as you know, that there is no set policy, just particularly for school board members. And that's what makes it difficult. Because the current language that exists right now. It's hard to go back and uh correct how things should be. Because of existing laws that really exist. So we did discuss all of that in length. And we made some recommendations, we came to a consensus. I know um Chair was asking about the historical aspects of this issue of background checks. The I'll I'll say this right now is that the twenty third, National Mission Council, Hesi. Gave us a directive, the twenty third. And we completed that directive, part of that component was to redo the reauthorization process. And part of that included the mandatory background checks. We were given a directive to work with the school boards. We're human to work with the Bozbo, Office of Labor Relations, Office of Background Investigations, and D O J.
By. So. Tornado, tornado.
Tornado, yeah.
Wait.
The persistent.
Not the land, not turning.
That was just the the symbol. That was just the the symbol.
Look outside.
Our line.
Yeah, Dorothy was here.
Um it it says pay inside. Um go to the go to an interior room.
Separate disney.
Um yes.
Like right here?
No, no, but.
Yeah. So it says that if you if you're in a multiple story building, go to the lowest floor.
Two.
You guys okay? So we're good. We're I think we're good. We're inside, but we're on the lowest floor. And what was that?
Next. Malice is here in a mobile.
Very good. Well, okay.
Which like we didn't see.
Yeah, I got it.
Okay, so we completed that that directive. Again, we worked with all parties. And we all came together. There was a consensus on the background issue, background check issue. Verbiage was drafted. Uh into the updating the reauthorization process and into a common language that everybody agree upon. They're making these positions. So right now, um there are fifty four vacant positions. Fifty four. Out of the one twenty four, I think one twenty, uh one actually, two hundred and twenty two um total school board members. So right now, I've been assigned uh by the superintendent to work with the schools that do not have form. And right now, there are eleven. So I just played each of those meetings to help uh help approve school action items. Um and I always consult with the superintendent and in on controversial items or questionable items. So when we have these school board meetings, um we look at the action items and move the process forward so the school could continue operations. Now, we've been given guidance from the we've been working, uh the Sedgware has been working closely with the uh election office. To try to gain to regain form for some of these schools who do not have form. So right now, what what was explained to us is that. If there's a vacant position, say like, I know the question came up at Chit Chindato. Chit Chindato is a form of the board. Right now, there's two that are currently getting their background checks re-done. Because what had happened at Chit Chindato was when they first got their background. Check completed, they did go back to their eighteen birthday and this was in accordance to the resolution passed by Hesse. So when we, when I came forward to help Chit Chindato, I asked them that they go back to their eighteen birthday. They did not, so they had to redo it again. And this was the first solution. So right now, uh I did explain to all the school boards that I currently assist. Is that what the guidance of the elections office was that if the Chit Chindato chapter, uh please, excuse me. Now, let me rephrase that. If Chit Chindato chapter recommends, the key words recommend. If they recommend to the Nataho Election Board Supervisors, an individual. And the and the Nataho Election Board Supervisors, they produce that individual. Then he or she can take their auto office, they complete their background check. Once it gets completed and the school regains form, then the Board of Ed relabelishes back. They full power back to the Board of Ed. So I explained this to each of the uh eleven schools. Uh so that they can reform. It's just to regain form. Now, if they wanna fill that fourth position, then they they use the processes provided by the Office of uh Elections Office. So a lot of um over in that situation now where they're working with the local chapters. The local chapters to seek a recommendation from an individual to serve on their uh their school board. So a lot of them are are um. I guess uh looking forward to completing their form. But the key, as as I explained to these schools, is that the key factor is that, yes, once you gain form. Once you gain three people out of a four-member board. Then you go back to the Board of Education so that the Board of Education can officially return the full powers back to. This the usual school. So that's what I've been uh explaining that process to them. So these schools are moving um their operations forward. Uh especially the ones that don't have form as deputy sits in. Um and repaves their action items with the superintendent, being that a powerful person. So that's kind of the I hope that answers that much of the normal vacancies of 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 the the current school boards. I didn't explain Chit Chindato. Uh and then the uh the cost for the vacant positions. So this process right now that was what the guidance of the election office, there is um. The only cost right now that I'm aware of for this recommendation from the chapters is that the individual still has to pay. The two hundred dollar filing fee like anybody else.
My cost question was to election.
Okay, alright. Um let's see. I believe I've done. Yeah, thank you.
Sure. Just call.
Okay.
Election.
Now that you have some background, it's a fee. Uh the whole special election, the nomination, we're looking at like a thousand dollars. And if it's an agency wide, that would be like um. Times the number of the chapters that were having elections. Just like uh when you had a community agency, agency-wide special election and you get sixteen thousand. To um. To pay the official. We do do the in-house uh printing for special elections. But of course, that does cost like uh the thirty supplies or eight or eight of fouled again. Uh then um. So that is about the cost issue that.
One, I thought that's one. Perfect.
What do you think? Okay, so although in that is about heat calculation, like I said, back in some. Joining with the elections, election is the initial on what J F. They weren't with the policies to pay the school board and we got, we were educated um two days ago. Um and get get our elections gaining and for the qualification, if join A, that's kind of not qualification, but. Background check, if that's where kinda um not kind of, but it does have a major role. But in October on beforehand would be great. And that's what we're talking about, but will require a recommendation from the Bosman that that's pretty much a recommendation. Although there's the other offices, the other departments that will be doing their portion as well. So yeah, all we're asking is that put in place so at the beginning we can, we we. We don't hesitate as election office to say background check is a requirement. So, yeah. Good morning. Good morning again, everybody. I'm Yazi. Um thank you Chair and members of the House, the Community Committee, and the Stars is coming. Stop guests. So um I just have a comment, uh a few comments that I used. So um. Background investigation, background checks are to determine suitability for employment of our form for school board members, certain positions. So um and it is protected by the law, the laws that were happening about the law that's giving cover, the laws that are like. Uh up for recommendations. Um first of all. In speaking on local school boards and the schools. These are our control over our alien children. And then also it goes on to say that it's in the community against children. And all those are listed here, that serious crimes. And then it also says identifiable character traits. So we see it. As the opposite background investigations, we see it. And these are reports, criminal reports that we see. So going back to the law and looking at it. Um thinking about it off the back, this is gonna make an impact on O B I processes. Um the risk, is it dangerous or not? Our own liability, then including our partners. We work with an affirmation police department, information management section, and also we work with the prosecutor's office. And then we get audited, we get subpoenaed. So yes, this is something that's very serious, the change changes, you know, change is always hard. Um but definitely wanna comply, so we are doing more research. Um thank you for scheduling another meeting. I'm looking forward to discussing further with everyone here. Including our legal review as well. Thank you. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Chair Committee members. Uh I I guess what I read in the document that I did completed in as a small title. My keyboard had the E kind of double every time that they keep Monday, so it's recognized. Um and then so it's like and it's like it's uh based on the comments, this is, I guess, the draft from the both of. I was under the impression when we had met a couple days ago that. The comments that were made during that time, I would draft the like um the qualifications. So as far as the felonies crimes, it is crossed out on the top, but if you notice in H one, that's where it comes back. So we wanna like how I drafted this was more specific to twenty three uh six, twenty five C F R sixty three. And so and I think that's one of the agreements that we had made. Department of Education, uh Mr. Gray, according to Sedgware, did agree that we would. Go off of twenty three uh twenty five C F R. So that's why there's a specific section just for um. For these crimes. I know uh I we we did go into discussion as far as the alcohol portion. Uh but again, it was an agreement amongst the group that said, we're we'll just go off of what O B I does, which is the training. Child sensitive positions and as far as the the how far it goes back. Twenty five C F R actually goes are background checks. In accordance to twenty five C F R part sixty three actually goes lifetime. So it's going to be looking at all these different charges in there. Um B I E Bureau from the school and in any position under the B I E teachers, principals, volunteers. Child endangerment is one of the most serious kind of uh ser- serious crimes and it would ex automatically exclude you from. Working at a school. So again, I was under the impression that I was, we were going to follow that. As mentioned before, um uh there's not really a requirement in code right now regarding the background checks. So the arguments on like on the other side would be like, it's not in code. So if you notice in new J and has that, it is a requirement. And so. A- as far as school board members shall maintain the qualifications they adhere to under term of office and must consent and pass the background check. As required under twenty five C F R part sixty three. The reason why we pull twenty five C F R per six or uh subsect. Subsection sixty three, I actually have the title right there, um is because all of our. Elected school board members. Um, is because all of our elected school board members that are all under the B I E. Other than the Board of Education, I mean they should follow the same policies too. Earlier was mentioned that I am an adjudicator, but just know that I'm not adjudicating school board members. The adjudication that I do have, it is under just my staff. So all two of them, I do adjudication if needed. So um just know that that will mention it and the reason why I I do have an adjudication certification is just so I know what. Part sixty-three is about. I don't adjudicate, but know that I do have that certification and I do not adjudicate. Um, earlier, we did talk about Head Start overseeing these background checks because they have child sensitive positions. But I think that we have came in and said like this is a whole different um. Feature uh the politics should not be on that side. So that way like there there's so much cool that might happen, so it was best to just keep it separate. And so when the updated background check policy had came out, that's where the recommendations had go through to. Naval Office of Background Investigation. So that's now why they're doing the background investigation for our school board members. And so. Um, as far as. Um, days we convene, I think we're pretty much open, we kind of met with like last minute notice and I think I know that. We had a full-on discussion just regarding background checks too, so. Some of the stuff I do agree with qualifications, trip uh credentials, like again, like you leave your your main. Your main um constituents out who are the parents, a lot of a lot of our parents cross that combination do not. Um, have if there's any type of degree credential, they will not be able to sit in these positions. And so twenty-five C F R also um advocates for parent voice. And so yeah, they they could even through their parent or their personal manual, the sixty-two, sixty-three, sixty-to B I A and. It really advocates for parents. Uh, I. On the top of my my, on the top of the conversation that is happening, I did send over your email title eleven. Subsection one sixty-one regarding appointments. And so. To I I think this is one thing that I did bring over to the Election Administration as well, and I think it says something that your chapters would also be able to. Your chapters that are affected would also be able to use. In the designated section of B uh eleven N C one sixty-one or B. It's just saved by the Naval Board of Election Supervisors. In the event that no form of school board selected into the chapter election or if the number of vacancies occurring for any reason results in no form of the school board. Then the Naval Board of Election Supervisors shall make a selection from recommendation by the chapters affected in the form of a duly adopted chapter resolution. Provided that if no other chapter resolution received from affected chapter within forty-five days of the declaration of vac- vacancy, only those recommendations must. Made by duly adopted chapter resolution needs to be considered. So your chapters do have that power to appoint individuals into these positions and. We have helped several chapters, we did provide them over. A template uh along with the dates that these vacancies can happen. But I I from. From the meetings that I do tend, it just means that no one is really taking advantage of filling these vacancies. Uh, one of the last things too, I I think when. Um, not here political or anything, but as far as the Rough Rock Community School, I think during the reapportionment. One of the things that we had recommended that it just be to the local community. I know, I think uh the North League had also advised that it has to go with what COV said and so the words. Show changes to the students who were at Rough Rock. So I think another recommendation is to reintroduce the school boundaries that that. Goes back to our Bureau Funded Schools. So a lot of our professionals, when they do work at other schools. Outside of their communities, they take their students, and so that's why their students, they're regi- they're not registered, but their parents are registered for an outside chapter. So. But uh in the nature, I think one of the things that we can bring to the table too is as far as. The requirements for background um investigations too, I know it it the background investigation covers. A lot of statutes that are congressional statutes, so I think that's what we can bring that information to you and so these are. But it it not on. On the qualification, it might seem like we pulled a lot of uh language out. But know that it is covered under twenty-five C F R part sixty-three because these are some uh sensitive positions within. Our school, so. But know that you as uh the legislative body of Naval Mission, you're able to make. That we just politician more stringent, and so that's why we're saying that all right, ten years is our recommendation. Or like you know, I guess an alcohol ban, any people within ten years and. Uh know the both well or D O V employee being as core members. Uh Chair Committee members, again, I do appreciate the 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 dialogue that we're having today and. A. Any any help or any assistance or any clarifications, feel free to reach out. So, thank you.
Alright, well, again, thank you for the response. Again, I think it's very interesting to. Hear the response from D O V to Franklin. Um, I think it's been almost ten years now, since the twenty-third. Um, and we really haven't made any progress. I guess you have the listening there, whenever you guys reconvene. And give back together, that's very important piece to to share with Mark. In here that you guys have created. And then what I mean is if that's the problem is that we don't have a responsible person from D O V that can stay on the team. And hopefully that is you, hopefully. Um, but there's there's so many shifting moments at D O V that it makes it really difficult. Um. And and then all of the, the whole buddy system at at D O V is is another issue. Of that makes all of this not a good working progress. I I really hope that that whole buddy system, the group of you guys, the individuals there, that D O V that are still there. You guys just need to work together. And then we'll stop picking on each other and uh working again to totally. We know, we know it's like that, no. No doubt about it. We have top educators that are there, individuals that have degrees, uh could have doctoral degrees, but. I don't know if I'm nobody saying. That really needs some time for our for our kids. And then we can go to the side and. Start with your issues, thank any agents back and I hopefully, hopefully. You're you're not so shocked and I hope we can save what we seen and bring on with all the logistics, the information that you guys created. Since the twenty-third, I think um to to fit this issue, that's gonna be ongoing issue. A issue that you have put attention. Oh, A A for all. I'm really interested in seeing that listing as well, that's what you guys created with that directive that was given to the. Twenty-third councils. Um, and then again, thank you for the other numbers. That will help me to to figure out where where you guys are moving along. Who uh school board members, um and then of course the the two letters for um families. And the bills, um that that's another issue that I'd like to see how how old you just and and so. That's that's one thing that I I I look forward to seeing what what the outcomes for the people that. Um, my one to budget, uh not budget, um background check. Do you guys have access to record the lack of the county right now? And give me my information and you can check my background check. And tell me right away if if I'm favorable or not favorable. Do you have access to that kind of a systems? Um, if I were to follow you back to your office now. Within that time period that I'm there, can you tell me if I'm favorable or not favorable? Do you have a system that you can check my background check? Just like that, and and the reason why I ask is because. I I think because uh for those elections, um so um can make a problem that it would be very helpful to to know. The background history before um they apply and then the real Anderson also brought this up. So if I want to run for school board and I come to your office, can you tell me within that fifteen, twenty minutes? Uh if I if it's favorable or not favorable, to tell me if I should apply as a candidate for a school board position. Um, and and I think if you don't, uh I think it's gonna be very important to insert that into into the law. Somewhere if you says guys will get back together, insert that you know into the law that you should have some sort of a an access point right away. For for these individuals. That will. Have stronger teeth for um council to to always budget or fund um some kind of a data system or system. For you to have background check to say, hey, you know, this is the law and we need to fund this. Um, this needs to be funded at all times, on behalf of our kids, whatever, and so forth down the line. Uh I I don't know how um Department of Public Safety uh does it, uh I I know game they do have. Um, their their own system, so they're able to check it right then and there. And that's multiple, multiple, e- even your own finance, they're they're able to check your full credit report right away if they don't have that information. In in no time. Uh, I know at one point that Head Start used to also have the contract in place with one of the consultants and they could just. Give the information, send it over, email with the informations. And then within that hour or so, they would have a response back if the the individual was available or not favorable. Uh to move forward, uh to schedule an interview or whatever they need to do or they might have a temporary individual. But of course, that 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 contract has ended among them, so um so that's why I'm asking you um on that part. Um. And and then um just trying to, if maybe when you guys give time together. If you guys can write it in a written form, maybe just short of the conflict that is. Alongly regarded favorable and unfavorable. Um, I think that would be very uh very important for the committee to know as well and. What avenues do we have to to address that favorable when favorable um situation, even just for a an. A applicant or a candidate that was applying for the school board position, that 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 will be very helpful as well. But then that, um, and again, if you guys can give us a date on when he can come back before S E. Um, with all the other different things that. Were not looked into at your last meeting, um, or then twenty-third, then. But it would be very helpful to have a consensus document from you guys as a group and not just a bold divide themselves. Um, but as as a group. Correct each other. Um, they you guys, you guys have a lot of knowledge, background history, and so. And not so. But if you can give the committee uh an idea, I think they they thirty days, forty-five days, ninety days, uh sixty days, it's up to you guys. Uh integration. But I'll give uh non-essentially to the committee members, I know that afternoon people can do it.
Thank you, Chair. So just a couple of things, I had a couple of questions that were on the kitchen. Uh, so I think just including it as part of your work session that we're all convening with together. Um, and that was just a thoughts on one or more of the travel state or federal background checks prior to applying. I know our next election for school boards is not for a few years, but I think it um would be a good addition to the discussion that you guys will have. And then based on the cost. For the E A, so I I filled out a registration request and that's to seize local school board elections for vacancies on school boards and refer to eleven N C subsection one sixty-one. Um, because right now across all four agencies, you have combined total of nearly thirty thousand dollars that you were to continue. At that time, whatever. Um, and I say that like this, like let's take for example, Chula City, this is just, cause you guys have open candidates now. So for example, of um Chula City, who I think have thirty-six vacancies across different schools. Um, and you only have like two, then that opens up again for another election, then that's more money. And um you've heard me, which I am not favorable to giving uh funds to. In my own process that I think could be, you know, me at this time, especially if you have already in existing code. An opportunity for chapters to take and Board of Elections supervisors to take action. So um that's a a request that I'll be sending here shortly. Um, if you have any opposition, you know, I think now would be the time to mention that, otherwise it's. Um, something that I wanna make sure that we're being very um frugal with some of the plans, especially if it's not necessary. Logically, I think for myself. And then, but I think when you also reconvene um to discuss how many of those local school boards were cleared from. Travel control schools as well, it'd be good to see like some of the data presented. Um, and then going back to the election office, I did ask, uh should I, that if you have this in writing, but I don't. Want to remove it, um while you presented first. Yeah, it'd be good to have a copy, since I don't have a copy of that. And then the other thing is, um, so the both of spent. Thirty years spent as a document that's titled generated by the Department of School Investigation. And that was about dated on September fourth. Based on this file, there are twelve that don't have form. And so Franklin, you know, second is eleven, I want to know which is uh which is the correct number, is it twelve or is it eleven? It's eleven, mark it, twelve, then what schools? Uh, what school, apparently there's the one that I need to address here. So if I could just get clarification on that, or is there Franklin, you can just say for the record, which one of those schools you're killing, and then I can always just. And I think those are just my additional comments and questions, is how maybe the Chair.
Yeah, take care. Um, so at that, when we go back to presenting.
Uh, you say, uh, if I can hand uh give up the handouts on the election code. And and so I gave a summary on the prompt on the laws that we work with. Although um number of days, and it will do that ninety days, it was ninety days to get. Our our product together to get to you. And. Legislation. Right now, how it how it our election is set up is first three years, a special election and maybe for any position. Called. If there's a special election candidate on the post of the election for best appointment. That's one, and then for section one sixty-one. Uh, you know, if there's a lack of form on the school board. To make with, the board is authorized to only make a number of appointments to make the school board. So if there's already a form, then we won't, we won't utilize one sixty-one. Only if there is lack of form. And as far as the currents. The the, how far the currents is are.
Mr. Chairman.
So. Um so uh there are correction, um Mr. Chair and as a committee, there there are twelve. Uh they kind of both that don't have form. The reason why I said eleven is that um uh just for further clarification is that. Uh there are some boards that share schools and I just miscounted one of them. So for example, Little Singer and Luke, they share one board. Pendian Community School and Vladimir, so they share one board. So I just mis calculated really quickly, but I do have um the unfortunate here that I go off of. And so that's where your attention question, there there is only, well, but there is. Uh rural schools that the votes was assisting that don't have form. But in terms of travel control schools, there's twelve that don't have. All schools basically don't have form, but they can share um they uh to school board share schools. Um. In terms of the notification, um how school board members regain corn? Is basically um when the chapters recommend, as I stated. An individual to the applicable election board supervisors. When the when that body approves that recommendation from a particular chapter to serve on that board. They then follow the guidelines of the election office, which is to take the required postal office. Then they proceed with the background checks for federal, state and tribal. Utilize the national nation background, Office of Background Investigation Office. The O B I Office of Background Investigation then sends a letter to Claudia. And O D A C, because I'm not very O D A C. They send um a letter just stating whether they're suitable or unsuitable. If they are suitable. And they're the schools, the school board is able to regain corn. Then we place that school, that school board on the national nation board of education. To the national nation board of education to relinquish the assumption and give total control back to the school board. Then they no longer sits on that board. They because they just they have the form status. It's just to as um my colleague stated, it's just to regain corn. So three makes corn for some school school or members, they could still have one vacancy. But that's up to the the board on how they are able to uh seek that fourth individual. But this is this process that I think that we're using utilizing right now is just to regain corn status. Um I hope that answers that question for you.
Honorable tall. Uh also so if you have a new kid, they want to join the school board. For certain, you know, so. I think it's better off. We have a manual of this for school board. Okay, every year change nothing. Up for the art issue, they'll tell me the qualification, what I have to do when the election is. So we should have that everything in one book here is called what education. How to be single, your job. Um when the election is. All you have to do is come. If okay. Hopefully can please for me coming to become a smoker. So if I, you know, through the lecture or education or the school board or I'm gonna get the stupid. I don't have time to tell me what to do. What laws that I have to even know. The H A in the election. Uh you know, come hopefully someday, you know, a day I would social. Uh page of the law. Uh even on election, if I get an election. All you see is the uh candidate for qualification, this is all. Then you have some questions. Who do you work for? What's your 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 plans, your plan operation as school board? You can please a lot of people, hopefully someday. Get smart. I don't even. Office of Background Investigations, you help me in it. And yeah. That's what we need. Um it's all okay.
Okay, I don't know. Nobody had their response to the thing.
Oh, really? Okay, we're looking at nine ninety days or day, yeah, I guess about ninety days.
Alright, Mr. Frank.
Um I just wanted to respond to uh Honorable tall, if I may. Yeah, okay, so uh that was highly doubtful, because as I stated before, there really is no policy that's particularly for school board. So we did talk about um having a document where the school board wants to run. For a school board, then they know what the qualifications are. They know what they need to do prior to getting prior to survey that two hundred dollar filing fee. That they had to obtain a background check eventually and it must become they must be favorable. Right now, the current document, this document that is issued does not have all the information on there. It doesn't list that they have to get the mandatory federal, state and tribal background check and it must be favorable. So those things we 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 were talking about it in our uh meeting two days ago. Uh that we uh put together a a um a sheet or a booklet to say this is what. Uh needs to happen once your school board, we also did talk about the required trainings. Uh for for each board member to take because and if you find C F R, there are um. Forty hours of required training. Um and that circles around for travel control schools. It circles around uh the authorization requirements, like they only super suit zoom circular. For example, which is what's allowable, what can this school buy? What's disallowable, but the school cannot buy things of that nature was all. It's all written down in the um the authorization requirements on top of that is the required training like. A school board needs to know what one hundred two ninety seven is. They need to know ninety three, six, thirty eight, they need to know title ten. They need to know all these things, so those those are those required trainings are in the. Um policy that was developed ten years ago, but it was never approved by this committee because it wasn't the tail end of their term. Um so we can weigh on that as part of our our work group, Mr. Chair.
Okay, can I um thank you. Is there a way that when we need the minimum to go to your six days? Is that possible to do? I think ninety days.
Ninety days would be up, I'm sorry. Ninety days would be up December eleventh, so I went back, so it'll be right before um the trans day, which is on November the. November the eleventh. So. That's sixty days right there, November eleventh. And that's a holiday for for us because it's the trans day. November.
Yeah, we can do sometimes that we should.
November.
Yeah.
Within, you said within the sixty days, so it doesn't have to be November eleventh or yeah. You might have a sooner.
You already have.
Okay.
Um you guys are done, but it shouldn't take that long. You guys already could, Mr. Frank will know which kinds of putting their information and that they're right this. Well, we we can do sometimes that week, the week of November, we can't. Because that will be a holiday, I'm not I'm just hoping that we might have a holiday that one year too. If if President, we might have a little extension holiday. So that probably didn't happen. Monday, but we can do the chapter.
Uh Chair of Committee, um would it be possible to get this in writing? So normally it's best to just so there's accountability uh between the parties here and that way. May I, I'm I'm all willing to work and move forward with this and then we can. Make sure so.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Anthony, we'll we'll work on it um precise. Alright, we'll work on it then. Uh committee members, any others? Presented, nothing else, we're good, alright, well, thank you, thank you very much for inviting us into the mission. We'll look forward to next discussion regarding this type of. No one set another schedule as well scheduled, but the work session. The fall of thirteen, fourteen, maybe depending on how the committee will. Or before.
Okay.
Or or before. But again, that so with that, um there's nothing else, I think that we don't need a motion or a second or we don't need a vote on it. Again, thank you very much, same day. But I notify proposal meeting announcement adjournment, Mondays the fifteenth, has a regular meetings, Mondays the fifth from the second. As is regular meeting at ten AM, Monday the fifteenth, as is regular meeting Monday the twenty, as is regular. Monday, the forty, uh this is regular meeting at ten AM, all of those will be in one of our class, when they're on, you can write it. Have a good day, everyone, say they travel back.
Maybe there was something.
No.